I have a couple of our young scouts. Uh, big.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you gentlemen.
Do you want a motion?
Yes. I'll try and catch up. There we go. Yes.
I move the board to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have honoring excellence.
This evening, we actually have elected to give them the night off, given the inclement weather. And so, we had a couple of folks that were scheduled to be here to recognize for honoring excellence. We're going to reschedule them for a later, probably warmer meeting sometime this spring. So, I appreciate Dallas connecting with them earlier today to give them the evening off. So, we can slide right on into the next item.
Very good. Next up is public comment. I have one card. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight besides Deb? If not Deb, while you come up, there is one other item that we had notes on to highlight people who have filed for the two Board of Education Director positions that are going to be on the ballot in April. They are listed as they filed, and it's a three-year term for both of those positions. Nick Bartlow, who's I believe here in the audience this evening, as well as then Kent Peterson, and then David Evans. So, all right, Deb, you are here to speak this evening. Just before we get started, people addressing the -- there's a little bit of commentary we always go through. People addressing the board will be asked to not repeat what someone else has said before. Persons wishing to address any subject concerning liberty public schools and/or education may do so at the podium, persons addressing the board are asked to keep their remarks concise and to the point. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. A person or persons may speak only once at a meeting. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, usually within a week. And because these items aren't listed on the agenda, there's not an opportunity for board members to engage in a conversation around the public comment item. So, with the preamble, Deb, would you like to share some thoughts?
Good evening. My name is Deb Loomis, and I'm a longtime patriot -- patron of the Liberty School District. I've had four children go through the Liberty Schools. The oldest graduated in 2002 and the youngest in 2015. My last two each graduated with 30 college hours and were provided other hands-on learning experiences that has propelled both of their careers. Throughout my time as a parent of Liberty students, I was an active leader in the PTA, PTAs of my kids' schools. I believed in PTA as a way of bringing parents together so that they might know the parents of the kids, their kids, who are going to school with. PTA also brings opportunities for parents to interact with school staff and district leadership on issues that arise, and I was a leader in a lot of that. I've also supported the district directly by serving on boundary committees, which was not fun, and the Audit Finance Committee. I am coming to you tonight to applaud your decision to place the $49 million no-tax bond, no-tax increase bond issue on the April 3 ballot. I believe that strong schools make for a strong community, and our Liberty's community is strong because of its schools. But school districts must continue to fund school improvements in order for them to remain strong. The improvements proposed by this measure will bring the required safety enhancements to all of our facilities and also bring further growth opportunities for our students. I've always said, "You can educate kids all day long, but if you can't keep them safe, then education is all for naught." It's unfortunate that we live in an active shooter society, but we must do whatever it takes to keep our kids safe. Finally, I'm coming to you tonight as my -- in my role as Treasurer of Liberty Kids First. Liberty Kids First is a longtime community campaign committee that works to support Liberty Schools by promoting its campaigns, primarily by providing speakers to community groups, but also by mailings and yard signs. In order to support this campaign, I'm asking for contributions from you, the school board members, to the Liberty Kids First campaign. Former board members have supported previous campaigns, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to support this campaign. Your support will go a long way towards paying for the promotions needed to wage a successful campaign, help us get the word out. I'd also like to ask for a donation from those of you here in the room and in the audience at home to support the campaign. Please visit our Facebook page, Liberty Kids First, for additional information about our committee and where to send donations. Thank you for your time and for your service to our -- the kids of our community by your service as a Liberty School Board Member.
Thank you, Deb. All right, no other public comment this evening? In that case, we move to the consent agenda portion of our evening. And our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So, we have a motion.
I move the board approved consent agenda items 3.01 through 6.04.
Second.
Questions or concerns? If not, Sandra?
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to board policy updates.
We have two items under board policy updates, the first of which is 7.01. And you can see four accompanying policies that are presented to you for first read, IGBD, related to at-risk students, IKF, as far as graduation requirements, JHD, Student Guidance and Counseling Services, and then JHDF, Suicide Awareness and Prevention. We've already started the process of disseminating those throughout our system, as far as having administrators look at those. We will come back around with a formal recommendation, perhaps some changes, recommendations at the March board meeting. And so, would encourage you to take a look at these. If you have questions or need additional clarification, please feel free to connect with us, and we'll look to get you an answer. So, again, this evening, presented to you initially for first read. Under 7.02, we do have a couple of items, and keep in mind, procedures are only presented to you for your information as compared to policies which require board action. We do have two this evening that we are going to be removing from our content, and that is IGBD AP and JHDAP, one related at-risk students and then one related to student guidance and counseling. We'll be lifting those out of our procedural lists. That concludes the board policy updates. Okay?
Board questions?
You said you were lifting JHD out?
Uh, the procedures only. Yeah, students guidance and counseling procedures, and that that will eventually be included in the recommendation as we look at JHD in terms of those policy changes.
So, they just mean?
Parts of those will be captured in the recommendation or omitted entirely.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the parts that are being omitted, that are there all struck out and highlighted here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Unfinished business?
Yes.
Under 8.01, then, one item of unfinished business that we teed up a while back as it relates to kind of what we've been doing in identifying students at the high school level who, A, are either first-generation college, or B, we might be able to identify to propel them into more rigorous coursework. So, you'll recall, a while back, we approved the Avid program, which we're in the process of preparing for rollout in the fall at both high schools. This is a companion piece that's -- that kind of fits alongside Avid and its equal-opportunity schools. And just as a reminder, this goes into our student population and identifies those students that might be on the cusp of considering in AP courses or dual-credit courses, higher-level courses. And so, what we anticipate seeing is the development of student profiles based on their ability to excel or succeed in AP and dual-credit courses and those higher-level courses. And so, we're going to be walking through that process in hopes of increasing our enrollment in both AP, dual-credit, but then also populations that typically are underserved or underrepresented. And so, we look forward to be -- be able to increase those course offerings. I know Dr. Moore has stayed close to this. I don't know if there's anything else you would want to add to the recommendation this evening or not?
I think that the benefit, if you look at the difference between Avid and equal-opportunity schools, as Dr. Tucker said, this reaches more students, and that the first year, you have a director who comes in and they survey all of the students and all of the staff in order to get a better picture of where your students are, and they give you information. They give an insight card, which I think I shared in the original proposal, and it has seven different growth mindsets that they look at for each student, and then they get test scores, and it shows, and this one has a star for the student in science to show that this is somewhere where based on AP scores for students, where, and based on the student's growth mindset and data that the district has -- and the teachers have provided, where they would excel. And so, every student would have one of these, and that's what helps the -- the school identify those students. So, they do that during the first year, and then you have a partnership with equal-opportunity schools where a director comes in once a month and helps you along the way. And then during the second year, they help monitor those students, look at GPA, see how they're doing, and then just help you build that program. So, really, it's a year-by-year commitment. If we felt like after one year, we didn't need to continue it, we wouldn't necessarily need to. I think from academic services, we feel like at least a two-year commitment to really get us through the process would be our hope.
So, is this kind of just a better way of putting everything in one spot? It's kind of like a resume for the students, saying here's kind of where they excel, here's where they might want to think about going. Is it for parents? Is it for teachers? Is it for both?
Yes, for both. I mean, it's for everyone, so it helps the teachers know what students they should be talking to. It has some questions on here about staff that they feel comfortable with, so that you can identify an adult in the building that could really push that student. So that if we have students who feel disconnected from the adults in the building, the insight card puts people on there based on the student to say, "I really relate to this person." And then if they put nobody, then we have an idea that we need to probably reach out to the student. So, it helps -- it helps the school understand the student better. It helps the student understand maybe, and the parents, understand where their strengths are and where they could probably push themselves a little bit more.
And part of our work has been to do this internally, as we've tried to identify kids and encourage kids to take the AP dual-credit courses. This is more broad-reaching, I would say. The other important part is both kind of the combination of Avid and equal-opportunity schools is how we come back around and create a safety net for those students that are stepping into more rigorous coursework than perhaps they're used to. And so, I think that's where the adult piece comes into play, as far as staff and who can come alongside them, what services do we provide to not only encourage them to take the course, once they're in it, how do we make sure that they're successful in that course as well? As I was talking last week with our Missouri lead on this, Dr. Chris Belcher, some of you know Dr. Belcher from his time in Columbia, now he's with the University of Missouri. The thing they're excited about is being able to couple Avid with equal-opportunity schools, to be able to see how the two fit together and kind of the success that we believe that really it will create. So, there are a handful of districts that they're watching to see how that plays out. And so, we're excited to be able to provide kids those opportunities and challenge them a little bit, and we think that there are probably more students out there that can excel in this rigorous course work. So, okay?
So, we're not waiting for them to self-identify and wander in the right path?
Right. And kind of happen -- by happenstance, being a little bit more intentional, if anything. It's similar, I would equate it similar to how the -- some of the assessments predetermined how you're going to excel in college and the success that you might see in college. This is in a similar fashion in terms of trying to encourage those students to dive into that deeper coursework through looking at the data, kind of their potential in terms of those higher-level courses.
Can I share one more thing about?
Sure.
With Avid? On Friday, the -- two of the administrators led a session at the high school to talk about Avid, and it was packed the room, which was really exciting. And one of the things we were nervous about a little bit is having some of the AP teachers and knowing that they're going to be -- they're going to be okay with students who don't meet certain requirements to be in the class. And actually, there were several AP teachers in the room, and we were talking about Winnetonka and how they had identified a couple of AP classes to be the ones that we would try to get more students enrolled in so that they would find success. And actually, a couple of teachers came up after the presentation and said, "I want to be that class for these students," which was great. So, we had a really good conversation with them, and I think that the AP teachers have bought in quite a bit to the success of the program.
I love the concept. Is this something we can get a yearly update on? Maybe some samples of?
Absolutely.
Kids and some stories about how it's a package. And the other thing is cost. We're not approving costs, we're just approving a program. I see the cost, but where's the money coming from?
So, then that, those are the budgeting conversations that follow in terms of building it into our departmental budgets this spring. So, you'll see it twofold. The recommendation this evening to approve the expenditure, and then you'll see it again in terms of the budget approval process later this June. There have been some grant funds that were available, kind of off and on. I don't know if you have an update on that in terms of our ability to tap into grant dollars?
They have said that we can do that. Dr. Belcher will be here next week to meet with the group to talk about ACT, and so, we were hoping that if this went through, that we would be able to kind of pick his brain about how to look for those opportunities.
And then to your point, definitely, as we've -- as you think of a year from now, hopefully, we're coming back around and showing, A, we've implemented the programs, but then B, here's the impact that it's having, and then we do believe it'll have a term in this impact, again, on two fronts. That first-generation college-bound student, and I would say family, because oftentimes it's the first, and a new experience for the entire family. And then, secondly, kids diving into more rigorous coursework, hopefully reporting the success of that dive, so.
I just love how proactive you all are being, were being with equal opportunity schools, with Avid, so that we can reach out to these kids and they know that they have the same -- same opportunity to take these AP courses. I think it's fantastic. It's a great move.
So, I don't want to jump.
I'm done.
Year four? Is there a year four?
For equal opportunities schools?
Because what I'm looking at is, we've got costs here for year one, two, and three. Is it more than a three-year program or?
It is a -- really, you can stop after year one if you would like. Dr. Belcher has said that most school districts do two to three years, and then they kind of find a way to take this on themselves and manage it with their own people.
I just didn't want to bring in something for just three years that is --
No.
Sounds like a fabulous program.
We would just be able to take it on and do it.
Okay.
You internalize the process, and so, we've done some of this. So, this provides the structure for a year or two, and then eventually, we make it our own so that we then we forego that cost.
Dr. Camp has worked really hard at this and has improved the numbers quite a bit, but she obviously is one person who can't do that for both schools. So, this would kind of help them solidify the process.
That actually gets to the one question that I have, and this is not a question about how valuable it is, but we've heard concerns about adding programs with appropriate support. So, we get support from -- we get support as part of the package, as part of what we're paying for. And then, do we feel like we can all -- we also have the ability to support it on our end?
Yes and yes.
Okay. All right. And ask a question.
Yeah. I think what you end up seeing too at the high school level, logistically, scheduling, added staff in terms of, you know, staff who either have the ability within their existing load to add these sections as it relates to Avid. The other piece to it, as it relates to the curricular instructional support, it's not just for kids in those Avid programs. It's the supports are good for all teachers in all content areas. So, then there's professional development that comes alongside this. So, it's the logistics of scheduling and staffing, the professional development piece, the data mining to identify the kids as it relates to equal-opportunity schools. So, I think if anything, it just boosts the toolbox in that if you're a regular classroom ELA, social studies, science, math teacher, you're probably not going to see an added program per se, but you are going to come alongside with additional professional development and training that should just make you that much more impactful as a classroom teacher in understanding the diverse needs of learners. What would you add, Dr. Moore?
I would also say that I think the people who are leading the charge in both of these areas are very passionate about it. So, Dr. Camp, really with the AP courses, and then Lisa Fletcher and Bridget Furman with Avid have really been able to sell their story and why they're passionate about it. And I think that on Friday, they did a really nice job of getting people to understand that this isn't something else, but it is, like Dr. Tucker said, a part of what we will do. And people walked away feeling good about that.
It almost seems like it puts some structure to what I see happening ad hoc oftentimes, where somebody takes an interest in a student and tries to figure out how to coach him. This puts a little bit of infrastructure in place to make it a little more systematic so we make sure we're reaching the targets. I move the board approve the equal opportunity school program. Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to new business.
Couple items under new business. 9.01 is contracts and purchases, and per our board policy, DJF-1, which allows for emergency provision for maintenance purchases, and then certainly bringing those forward to the board for approval. We had a couple of situations in which we needed to go ahead and execute and move forward with work related to replacement of a cooling tower at Liberty North High School, which equated to $26,000. Some work on elevator at Lilian Schumacher related to $9,645. And then, repair of a main sewer line at the District Administration Center in the amount of $3,631.15. So, we wanted to bring those to your attention and then certainly recommend that we ratify that, and that the work has been done. So, I appreciate Mr. Anderson and his team moving forward with those items. Anything to add in terms of the emergency work that occurred?
No.
We just put that before you for your consideration?
This fits with our procedure. In several months, what comes to us in advance, what comes to us from emergency situations.
Right. I'm not too sure in years past how these emergency issues were brought in front of the board. It may have been under consent, but I think as part of those new procedures, we decided to bring them in front of you so you can bring visibility to it, since a lot of times it worked for pretty significant amounts. So, yes.
But obviously, can't wait until we have a board meeting?
It could not wait.
To get them, okay.
I move the board approve the emergency maintenance expenditure. Ten?
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Additional item for new business is 9.02, and that's related to the Ridgeview Walking Trail. It wasn't too long ago, three years ago, I believe, where we were actually out at Ridgeview celebrating the creation of the walking trail, kind of on the back of their campus, and we have since come upon a grant and an application that requires a resolution. And so, we've put forward that resolution for you this evening, and that we want to finalize, formalize that as we kind of walk through this process. What would you add in terms of this item?
Sure. Just briefly, credit to Justin Preston, our grounds manager, for kind of pursuing this with DNR. It's an 80/20 match. We're responsible for 20. It will allow us to go in and pave that path. That was put in a few years ago by the PTA. At the time, it was just kind of a gravel path, and so, they helped with the grading and finding the right location for the path. It's eroded over time, and so, this is a good long-term investment. Have a project that I think is well-received at the school, and so, this is a good opportunity to pave the path and pay 20%.
So, they just require the resolution in order to consider the grant?
Yes. I believe it's consideration, but I think it's the formalization. I believe that we have been selected, but we need to formalize it by your action.
I move the board adopt the Ridgeview Rehabilitation Walking Trail Resolution as presented.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, administrative reports.
First up is academic services, so we'll turn it over to Ms. Becky Gossett.
Is this open?
Sure, absolutely.
It's going to be brief, so. I wanted to make sure you all knew that we had a very successful day of professional development on Friday, called at Pineapple PD. War buildings were hosting, and it was really by teachers, for teachers, for the most, especially in the morning. So, there were many, many successful sessions throughout the morning, most run by teachers, sometimes teachers and administrators, sometimes a few folks from outside. But great, great reviews, and people felt engaged in their learning, and it was a lot of fun to see what all was offered and what all was interesting to people. Also, you can see the rest of the report, but I did want to point out that the signs of suicide training has been going on for secondary staff. Basically, there are some major components of this, but all staff have been trained to understand what the signs of suicide in young people look like. Also, students have been able to express their concerns for themselves or for Also, students have been able to express their concerns for themselves or for their peers. And then also, when there is a concern raised, parents and staff can, especially counseling and social work staff, can partner to help that student. So for the most part, that's completed. I think there might be some buildings who are still involved in pieces of this. You can see other pieces of the result, and if you have any questions, Julie and I will be glad to answer what we can.
Any questions for academic services? Next up, then, is finance and solvency.
I have one donation to recognize tonight. We had an anonymous monetary donation in the amount of $500 to the DMS Drama Department to purchase theater banquet trophies, and we thank them for that. In business operations, we received four RFPs for auditor services that were due on Friday. So we have a team of folks evaluating those with the goal of bringing all four in for interviews within the next couple of weeks, hoping to have an initial recommendation to you at the March Board meeting, followed by action at April Board Meeting. The AFC Audit Finance Committee met last Monday night, had a great meeting with all in attendance. I did not have anything of note to bring to your attention. And then next month in March, we start our annual visit of the budget with revenues, and followed by expenditures the next month, and the preliminary budget in May, and the final in June. So starting that front of the season. That's all I have tonight.
It's a busy season as well. Any questions for Cindy regarding finance? Dr. Vogel, our Human Resources?
Thank you. You'll notice there's two documents uploaded for the HR report. One comes from the Cooperative School District Retirement Trust. This is an executive summary of the calendar year 2017 activities of the Investment Committee and the Board of Advisors for the trust. We are members of that. I serve on the Board of Advisors and on the Investment Committee for this on behalf of the school district. There's about 27, 28 school districts around the state of Missouri that participated in that, and that's an executive summary of that report. The other item is the broader report from the Resources Department, and of the items on there, I want to draw your attention to a program evaluation that we're doing on the early notification incentive. Included in there, some trend data in terms of the number of employees that participate in the early notification incentive program versus those who meet the criteria and are eligible, who resigned historically but did not take advantage of the early notification incentive. So we're examining that data, looking to see why the significant number of our folks who resigned, who could have participated, chose not to. What was it about the incentive that wasn't attractive enough to act on that? We're evaluating that program. But this is good information in terms of showing you just what slice of the pie on the certificating classified staff are taking advantage of the early notification incentive, and which ones could but don't. And obviously, for 2017, we don't have the analysis of those who could but didn't because the school year obviously is still going on. There's that, and other information in the report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anything for Dr. Vogel. Okay. Operations, Mr. Anderson?
A few items I'd like to highlight this month. First, I believe we sent out an email to you all. The Transportation Department just concluded their state inspections, which, again, this year was a success. They added 96.6% pass rate on the first go-through, and only had three minor issues that were rectified right there on site. So just wanted to acknowledge Jeff Baird and his team, and especially Ed Meter, who's his lead mechanic. They were actually down a mechanic this year and really represented us well in that regard. In addition, the capital planning process, probably later this week, if not early next, you'll see the, kind of the final plan for the capital, all the capital work. Again, that's a rolling plan that includes work that is selected and work that will not be selected. Just for some perspective, there's about $100 million worth of projects on that list, and there's about 560 projects. Bear in mind of that $100 million, all of the bond projects are within there, and that's how we capture and trap that. So about half of that is reflected in the bond that's coming forward. And then there's about $5 million worth of work that we will take on this current year. So that takes us down about $45 million that will roll into future years. And last, China Slaughter Reading Park. I believe you all are aware of progress that has been made here in recent months on site. The, we are wrapping up plans for the final phase of work, which will include a sign and a seat wall, as well as some additional furniture for the site, all funded out of the contributions made through into the Liberty School District Foundation. Also, the Liberty Arts Foundation is finalizing their plans for the sculpture statue, which will be erected here this spring, and they have made good progress on that work as well. The date that's been selected to reveal the statue, kind of christen the park, is on April 26 at 4:30. You're all welcome to attend, and we'll have more news on that as the coming months move forward.
Mark your calendars, February 26th. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? The last, then, under the administrative, administration reports, just a couple of additions to the superintendent's document that you have in board docs. I did think it fitting to express condolences and sympathies to families and loved ones from Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida regarding the tragedy that occurred last week. Hard to really be able to wrap your head around that and the implication, and that our hearts go out to kids, families, to that community. We know that as we've had conversations even over the weekend, as far as how do we allow for avenues for students to express themselves, but then also allow them to, you know, express sympathy and condolences for those that are part and close to this situation. Appreciate Dallas for his assistance in us being able to communicate out to families a little bit about what we do in Liberty Public Schools, now we do take safety and security very seriously, if not the top priority. And if not for safe and secure environments, then learning can't happen to the extent that we believe it should. With that in mind, a couple of key things, as I was talking to a parent this afternoon, we can really encompass our work around this issue, around safe and secure schools from a physical standpoint, but then it also comes in the form of training, as we look to train faculty and staff, really for their role in such situations. Probably the third and most critical piece is how do we come alongside students that are dealing with, whether it's trauma, whether it's situations, as they, you know, find their way in life in adolescence, as they interact one with another, and being able to assess what they're going through, but then also support them with the appropriate supports through social workers, through counselors, through caring adults. And probably the fourth piece to this is coming alongside our community partners, from law enforcement, from the medical world, from the fire department, from the City of Liberty, from the City of Kansas City, Clay County, our state agencies, that we value the partnerships and having a lot of eyes on the work that we do within our community. There's a fifth element that has yet to really be determined, and that is the fruit of what our citizens passed earlier last fall in the Children's Services Fund, and being able to do more in the space of mental health, and that we feel like we'll have an opportunity to do more. So we're exploring that as the board gets established at the county level, to be able to oversee the Children's Services Fund, and also the application and grant process that we will be walking through as far as creating a proposal for consideration by that board. So again, the work is never done as it relates to ensuring safety and security, and we will continue to take steps and make strides in that direction. But again, our condolences to the Parkland, Florida, community. Couple of additional items that I wanted to share. Wanted to recognize a group of about 12 students from Liberty Public Schools that were recently honored last week for the first time by the Liberty Chamber of Commerce in what they have created and dubbed as 20 Under 20, which was really to focus in on young entrepreneurs. So we heard some amazing stories of students as young as third grade, all the way to high schoolers, that have in essence created their own business. One example was Happy Apps, in that they were trying to provide social media support for businesses and companies around Liberty area that may not have the means to be able to create social media for their particular entities. To others that, really, another group that we talked to or that we were hearing from was about kind of refurbished shoes, so gently-used shoes, and how the students created a business by being able to go and procure gently-used shoes and resell them, and being able to do some things there. So we look forward to showcasing these students, bringing them in front of our Vision 2020 group, which is focused on entrepreneurial skills, likely invite them to a board meeting, but that was recently announced as of last week, and will continue to be an ongoing thing sponsored by the Liberty Chamber of Commerce. So we're excited about that. Also want to continue to let you know that we're still in the process of facilitating state of the district meetings. We've gotten about a third of those under our belt, so we've got about two-thirds to go. We have several tomorrow and Thursday, depending on the weather, but that will continue through the course of the month of February. In addition, a variety of community engagement opportunities to be able to provide information around the no tax increase bond issue, couple of community meetings to put on your calendar, one of which is to be hosted at Discovery Middle School on the evening of March 6 at 7:00 p.m. The following week, we'll have a daytime meeting on March 12 that will occur at Pleasant Valley Baptist Church at 10:00 in the morning. So we'll be providing information regarding the April 3 election and the no tax increase bond issue. In addition to those two community meetings, we will have a variety of civic meetings that will be scheduled, again, to be able to provide information. This week, keep in mind that Thursday, we have our Coffee with the Community, in which we will highlight our topic of college and career. So Colleen Jones will be sharing information there, as well as bringing some students forward to be able to provide additional information on the work and experiences that they're seeing in preparation for career and college pursuits. With that said, those are the only additional highlights that I had to my report unless you have specific questions. And that will conclude our administration reports.
As always, the meeting list is long, so next month, study session and regular board meeting, 6th and 22nd, and the calendar goes up to the end of June. Board Education Reports, peer learning rounds. Anybody want to share their reflections on some of the visits around the district lately?
Did you share on RITU?
No.
They do the bi-barqueless thing at their community circles. They do their rah rahs in their, instead of clapping, in deference to their students who have sound issues and noise issues, they do rah rahs with pom poms, which I thought was absolutely amazing. And I also really liked, when I found out what it was, the PE teacher hands out a golden shoe to the class who has the highest percentage of dressing out. There were some issues with students not dressing appropriately for PE. So rather than make it a punitive measure, they award them with the golden tennis shoe, which is a big shoe.
Spray painted.
Spray painted. I mean, it's amazing. But the really cool thing in their community circles is they recognize the kids for all sorts of great things, and they get little charms to put on their necklaces. They all seem very proud of those. But particularly from the sped world here, the rah rahs with the pom poms so that all of their kids could be part of it was just lots of fun. We even got pom poms ourselves.
I just got tired of shaking them.
Oh, and if you have the opportunity to go to RITU, look at their Lego bulletin board. Amazing. It's pretty cool. So, yeah.
I was, we went to Lewis and Clark a couple, there've been quite a few of these learning rounds over the last few weeks, and so there's a lot that we could talk about, but Lewis and Clark I enjoyed, because at lunch, they have gone to open seating, rather than this group goes and sits in these chairs for my class, they just kind of go into the cafeteria and they go sit where they want. And they've got some tables that are, you know, traditional kind of long, they've got some seats up against the wall, and it seemed like it might be chaos when Mitch Heiser was initially talking about it. And it was loud, there was a lot of talk going on, but it was so orderly, and kids seemed to be enjoying themselves and yet choosing their paths. And so I appreciated the fact that you don't always have to, you know, line them up in rows to get things to work out.
We also have come a long way with co-teaching classrooms. Most of the classrooms that we saw there were co-teaching situations, and you could really see that, how that was successful for those students.
Yeah, and there's a lot of the, some of the personalized learning going on, especially with fifth grade. They had, I mean, each of the teachers in their own classroom, and they had groups of students with particular needs being addressed in that room. And then you had other kids that were just sort of working on their own out in the commons area, and you ask them what they're doing or why they're there, and they say, because this is where I should be, and this is what I need to be learning. And it was, you didn't have 30 kids packed into one room, all being taught at the same level. They were all able to progress as they were ready to do it. So it's good stuff over there.
I also had a chance to go to the Early Childhood Center, and if you need a boost to your soul, always to go. Nothing better than an unsolicited hug from someone who's not very tall.
I also had the opportunity to visit the Early Childhood Center, and there was an incident. A youth, I was surprised, under four years old, could break out a door, I mean, running through a door quickly, but I was impressed with how the staff managed it. They, with great skill, they didn't draw a lot of attention, but surrounded him and protected him. And they have a wagon there, you've probably seen that. They brought him back in the wagon, and he was in a much better state of mind. I was deeply impressed. I got a hug also.
He ran through an open door, right? He didn't run through a door.
An open door. He pushed the door. He pushed the door open.
He wanted out.
And I also had a tour of South Valley by their, three of their student council young ladies. The South Valley original learning round was canceled due to the last snow day, ice day, whatever day it was. But these young ladies gave me an in-depth tour of many closets. Lots of classrooms, things that they knew about what was going on with the classrooms were impressive for these sixth graders. It was a lot of fun, and while I enjoy the principal and the assistant principal in that building, their sixth graders did them proud. So learn things about South Valley that no existed.
Good stuff. Good stuff. Any other board remarks?
I think Dr. Tucker addressed it, but I will note it also, that the tragedy that we've seen in Florida truly is, it's an experience that I would not like to see, don't want to see other youths go through this, or their parents, or their families. It truly is tragic. And surely, if a nation can put a person on the moon, it surely can address this. And it just takes the willpower to do it, and we've got to decide as a nation, do we have that will? And can't allow certain things to interfere with that. It truly is tragic when our children are lost. That was the safest place I could go, would be in the school when I was a child, and now it's reversed. It's a sad state of a nation, and we surely have got to make changes to it. And so maybe we have to have the courage to stand up.
One of the things I, that my comments kind of go in line with that, and we don't want to discuss this, but this is something I approached about a year or two ago with Noel Scholl, the state rep, the state rep in my district, and I wanted to kind of involve some people, maybe get some other state reps involved. I'm wondering if we can modify state sunshine law to allow us to talk about safety and security issues behind closed doors without broadcasting them. Right now, sunshine law allows us to talk about three things behind closed doors, it's real estate, legal items, and it's personnel issues, which at times are necessary. But when we're talking about safety and security issues, and which buildings don't have as secure of entrance as another
of entrance as another building, et cetera, I would like to be able to do that behind closed doors as well, just to not broadcast any of those things. Frankly, at Liberty, I think we're extremely safe. The district did a great job last week of putting a list of things that we do as a district out there, but I think that would be a good thing for the entire state is to think about doing that. So I'm going to be in touch with a couple of you that live in a different state rep district and people in Carney and Park Hill as well and see if we can get the momentum behind this again. And I would be very interested in what people think about that idea. I'm floating the idea. I don't want to talk about it in the meeting, but if people in the community have thoughts about that as well, I would be very curious to hear your thoughts.
Got remarks of a different nature. As the board rep to the district foundation, they're board meeting this month and I wanted to point out a few things to the rest of the board so you're aware. They just finished their Major Saver campaign and were presented with their check for this year and it was an 11% increase from last year, I believe. They made over $67,000 on that campaign this year. And then some events coming up to which we can participate, in which we can participate. The Hope Awards are next Tuesday and Thursday night at Heritage Middle School at 6:30 both nights. One night is for elementary, the other night's for secondary. So it's the 27th and the 1st. And then the Community Breakfast is at Williamsburg College on March 13. And there's tickets still available and I believe as of a week or two ago, there were still at least one, maybe two tables available. So if you're interested in any of that, I can get some more information, just letting know.
Thank you. Anything else before we?
Oh, Liberty Alliance for Youth continues to look at ways to get the message out on how to keep your youth from using substances, that they should not, anything from alcohol, tobacco, drugs. There was a group that went to Washington the beginning of the month and were able to talk to some legislators, aides. I did not go to that, but was in Washington for their conference, which was lots of very good information about trends in the country and programs that are working in communities and Liberty is part of a drug-free community. So be looking for billboards because they're getting ready to put those out.
There's nothing else? I move the board to turn.
Second. Ready to go.
Sandra, don't drag it out.
Okay. Scott? Andy?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.